I would like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, June 6th. Like to call the meeting to order and have you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to welcome Mr. Cormode. He is going to be doing our very first invocation at our Atchison County Commission Meeting. So, thank you, sir, for joining us and being willing to do this for us.
I feel more comfortable if I stand.
Yeah.
Well, I thank you for inviting me to come to your meeting this morning. And I consider it a privilege to share these moments with you. As a pastor, as a school board member, as an officer and director of a couple of public nonprofits, I empathize with being a public person. As I come to pray with you today, I want first to direct your attention back into three scriptures. First, in 2 Samuel 3, 23, it is written, "The God of Israel has spoken, the rock of Israel has said to me, when one rules justly over men, ruling in the fear of God, he dawns on them like the morning light, like sun shining forth on a cloudless morning, like rain that makes grass to sprout from the earth." And in Micah, the sixth chapter, we read about the administration of the good. "He has told you, O man, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you? But to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with your government." Thirdly, in the Apostle Paul's instruction to the Christians in Rome, we read in the 13th chapter of the letter to the Romans about the relationship between citizens and government leaders. "For rulers are not a terror to good conduct, but to bad. Would you have no fear of the one who is in authority? Then do what is good, and you will receive his approval; for he is God's servant for your good. And if you do wrong, be afraid; for he does not bear the sword in vain; for he is the servant of God, and avenger, who carries out God's wrath on the wrongdoer." Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for creating us to live in communities and guiding us to create governments to handle our mutual affairs and your continual mindfulness of us. I pray for these commissioners of our county that you will give them wisdom to justly decide the matters before them on this day. May they act in respect of you. May they be guides like the dawn of the morning light, shining like the sun of a cloudless morning, refreshing as the rain that makes grass sprout from the earth. I also pray that they will act and think humbly in this role, recognizing that you are the source of all justice and compassion. May your goodness flow through all they do. Heavenly Father, we do admit and acknowledge that all government leaders, whether in county or township or state or national office, are your servants for good. I pray that these commissioners will have the courage to praise the good and to correct the wrong done around us and our community. Thank you, heavenly Father, for calling them to be your servants in our county at this time. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, I seek your blessing. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner comments to Mr. Eavis. Oh, sorry, I fast-forwarded. Public comments.
That'd be me. Okay.
Hi, Mr. Gage. Welcome. Nice seeing you again.
Oh, I have one question. Where's podium gonna be on Friday?
Okay, so the concrete pad is?
Yep.
It's gonna be on the very east side of that. There's gonna be a four-by-cheat of wood down, and we're going to be able to walk on concrete onto the wood, podiums on the wood, as you old commissioner podium.
That tells me where I have to have the American flag. Now, where am I? Where are we coming out of?
Coming out of the courthouse.
Coming out of the courthouse, down the sidewalk.
Yeah, at the front, out of the north doors, yeah. And you can come down the sidewalk and you'll then come around the statue and
Yeah.
put the flags where we, where we guys decide are appropriate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Got everything I need.
You're gonna be there at four o'clock to walk through it. I'll probably be there close to that. I've gotta be somewhere else right before that, so I'm squeezing.
The Riverfront?
No, that's another story. I'm getting roped into something else. Otherwise, I'd be done. Dr. Apple is doing that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, he stole you before I got you.
Well, you need me.
I may show up down there and do the same thing.
As a board member of the historical society, I'm glad this is getting done.
I agree. I didn't realize how much deep cap like you guys have been dealing with, but we're about, we're about there.
Thank you, guys. Okay, approval for minutes from the last U-Commission meetings. Let's do, do I have approval for minutes of May 30th?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye. I pass three to zero. Approval for minutes of our special meeting from June 2nd.
So.
I was second. It's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Zero. Okay, on the May 15th, I know that you guys wanted some changes. So, do you guys wanna give those changes to Kaylee so she can reference them from my wording? If that way we can get them approved next week.
Yeah, we can do it next week.
Yeah, but we just, you guys gotta tell her how you want it worded, like what wording you want.
I think you need to say, like, what you want to state. You added it.
Well, well, I added it, and you guys had an issue, and so I don't wanna waste our time Kaylee and I revising and then not liking it, so.
Okay, later in the meeting, before I talk.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so don't let us come back to that. Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Eavis.
Okay, so, yeah, went to the Extension Council's open house. They're really nice open house. Every decorator refurbished their office, and in Lancaster, it looks really nice. I met Taylor Lee and Tricia Chalton, the two new employees there, helping with their other outreach. Love insight and love enthusiasm. So, most board members were there. They were having a meeting after that. It's very positive. It felt like we got a lot of inertia, it's like going on. They went to spandle up, a lot more people involved in different districts. So, it's, it was good, a lot of energy, a lot of positive energy, so it was refreshing.
My multi-county health meeting that was to take place last night was moved to Q12. So, I'm gonna do that at 7:00 PM in Iowa.
Okay, and I have a senior village meeting tomorrow, so. Approval of expenses. So, when Michelle and Kaylee and I got our heads together on the agenda, cleaning it up from history, one of the things after last week of not the bills, and this is a part where we can take the time to review the bills and approve the expenses. So, do you guys, are you guys okay with keeping it in this area? I mean, it just made sense to us of making sure that's done. We can give them back, and then we don't have to. Cause there's been several weeks where one of us will leave without signing or, you know, all the things, so.
Are we gonna vote on it, or is this just the time that we were gonna sign it in?
So, so it was on there as called approval of claims. And when I asked Michelle what it was, she was like, it's approval of the bills. So, we hadn't been doing it. So, I just changed it to expenses so that we, we can discuss them or take time during that to be able to review them and go, and go through them.
We should have a formal motion each time on this. We should say, okay.
Yeah. And so, I don't know if you have any guidance on that for us, cause I know you have to sign off on it with us.
To me, the main thing is, it's a budget expense. It's already been planned, and it's routine. Like, it's pretty easy. What I'd like to have is just point out, here's something different, not the silver budget item, so surprise. That's all I would ask. Is anything unique, otherwise I'd prefer a routine motion.
I think most of those are either better, if it's unique, it's brought to us by Mark or a PO saying it's over their spending limit. I mean, yeah, most of the time, but so these are usually all pretty much routine.
Okay, so we have two things, the AP Payment Register, which is all the expenses from each of the departments from through the week, and then the cash requirement summary. So, on the cash requirement summary, is there anything we should be taking note of?
Well, you can't spend more than you have. Basis law, but. So, you should be paying attention to that, but we're not anywhere close to that being an issue.
Okay, and when we have, so the generals in here, but then we have the additional, the other funds outside of the general fund that have, that don't have the cash balances, or something, anything we should be taking note of there, or?
Really, I defer to finance director about that.
Okay.
I was wondering, like, would a sample be that someone make the motion to approve both financial reports and expenditures? And then, or do we wanna make a motion for each one separately? Or, you know, I was just wondering how.
Could we just say approve the expenditures and financial reports?
In one motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you, you can't do one or the other, cause they are both the same. You're just getting different reports that say the same thing. So, if you were to decline one, you decline it all.
Okay.
But as far as the cash requirement report, it is just a report that shows you the amount of cash available that you have. That doesn't necessarily mean they're over budget. They're just maybe don't have or have plenty cash to offset their expenses. Typically, when you get to the end of the year, if something is negative or less than zero, it's more of a problem than it is now.
Okay.
There could be an influx of cash for any reason on that report. There could be transfers that need to occur. So, some of those funds is different than just like the general fund, for instance.
Okay.
I'm, I know when you first came on board, the first time, I had had a question for you, and I think you asked the auditors. And that was, I noticed in other boards that we actually had the, to approve the expenditures. And I wondered if there was anything that the auditors needed in, in the minutes for, for that, for, you know.
Yeah, they do not. The auditors that we currently have indicated that what you guys sign each week is sufficient for them. They, you guys have left their own, you signed it. They knew that there was this option in the agenda that kind of covered that in your meeting. But I'm sure a vote doesn't hurt.
Yeah, absolutely. And for the ones that are a negative cash balance, like, is there a time that we, I mean, we're signing off that we acknowledge it, but is there a time or a process that?
I think you should visit with your department head over the top of the funds to see what the plan is to turn it around.
Okay, so we're signing off, we acknowledge it, and then taking steps to correct it. Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
If you're going to do that with a formal motion, everyone, of course, needs to review them before you get to that point. And usually, I don't see that till I have it.
Okay.
I don't know if you have a cause of problem, but.
So, that's, that's really good to think that maybe we should review from the nine to 10 and then have it approval toward the end. Yeah, is that, yeah, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
If we, we can review?
I think that's making more sense.
And we have time to review.
Do it after county council updates, that way he has a chance to look at it, he'll have a chance to.
Yeah, or even, we could do it after executive sessions, that way it's at the end. And if we have executive sessions, everybody that's behind can get caught, like, caught up if, if we have time. Okay, so we'll just move approval of expenses down about, between 13 and 14, please. Okay, perfect. Pat, are you okay if we're ahead of schedule and just?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll do the tax sale resolution.
Okay. Did you wanna take that first?
Are you public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, perfect, sorry.
I know where.
Okay.
1877 McTherson Road. Alan Kane tied on to Culver's. I talked to Joe Snyder. I draw pressure from Kyle coming into the ditch, just pushing back in my field, and the ditches are getting bigger. And I think my dad's been in there talking to people before, like a year ago, and nothing getting done about it.
And I give you a piece of paper, so that would be me, cause it's in my district. Contact info, and then follow up with you. If you don't mind writing it down, and. I know exactly what you're talking about. So, it's tied on, and then it's putting pressure back into eating engineers.
Yeah, my field's going down. I noticed that, cause I'm, too, we did, we're performing. It's a mess.
Yeah.
At the same time, are, is your riser on the county right away? It's not, it's on yours, okay?
No.
I haven't been down to, someone said that they thought it was on our.
A lot of people working for the county, some of the kids, you know, have been talking to me about Joe was, somebody had run their mouths, and now they're all gonna get started.
I, it wasn't even that. I mean, it was just.
This is what I was told. Joe said, well, the pipe coming out of the ditch to feed the culver was on the county side. I said, well, if that's the case, I'll take a torch and I'll cut it back off on my line.
All right, I'm just gonna say, if my, my comment was just gonna be, if, if we're gonna address this, probably we need to address all at the same time.
No, mine's, mine's legit. But I went to the ASC office and Wade Meade told me, he said, Robert, the thing to do is just go cut it. Told me, you know, he said, cause it's illegal.
Is your?
I can't do that after the county right away in the road.
Is your name Mr. Kramer?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, yeah. I've been out there, and yeah, your pipe's fine, based on, they put flags on our right away.
I seen.
Yeah, so we, we double-checked to make sure that.
And I know he's gonna be a hard ass, and we, we all know that Alan's gonna straight forward ahead on that. You know, some of it's good, but it ain't good in that, in that spot. It's just not good.
Yeah, that's one thing we've learned is, seems like it varies quite a bit around the county, depending on the terrain and the amount of water.
Right.
How, how you can get in and out of places, so.
From my address.
Just phone number is fine, just so I can call you and follow up.
And, and it's like, when, you know, when it's drying, and that people from Oscealoe's drive up and down the road, the dust is just unbelievable. I mean, you can't even be outside. And it goes home across.
Is that a pocket to cut through right there?
Well, not, well, since they started the rock court.
Yeah.
Right, okay, yeah.
I mean, it gets pretty mean there. Really, really super dusty.
Right, it does control that area.
I'm Casey Quinn. Nice to meet you. Yep, and I will text you my contact, so you know when I call you, that it's me. And I'll, I'll work on this and get back to you. All right, thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Nice to meet you. 2023 Tax Sale Resolution.
Okay, well, the statute requires that the Board of County Commissioners authorize or direct the filing of judicial foreclosure. Seeing, for working diligently, will file one on Thursday for calculating all the amounts due to that date. There have been few redemptions that have come in, that people pay their taxes because of that deadline. So, there's a proposed resolution. Option. Do the decision. The resolution number is about 25.
Look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-1525, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, concerning judicial foreclosure and sale of real estate tax rates.
Second.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to zero.
There are just 70 properties.
See, 70?
70.
It's good to hear people are coming in and taking care of it, too. We still have some time. Do we want to do the minute wording? Or I could do the letter of support for rainbow, like, there's options.
Let's do rainbow.
Okay. Yes, she, yep. Oh, I did not submit it. So, Angie had sent the commissioners, the.
Template.
Yeah, the template for the letter of support. Do you want, do you wanna review it before we? Or it's pretty good there?
Little changes, I guess, I think, but. Your box has got to be in the same limits of our area.
Do you access the mission chart? Give me a second. Hope I can do that. What, what actions on hand, runners? Just want, I mean, is this close to you? Do you wanna reach out to him?
A little bit. I'm not exactly sure what he's.
He's looking for volunteers from Atchison County to take care of their, some areas of Jackson County.
My folks, context, please ask the veterans to help me, or something, I mean, anything. Just get the contact information. I'll get ahold of him, see what he's really. It's, and I'm on several boards with him anyways.
I mean, I think that the, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm thinking that if they were gonna do a cleanup, they wanted us to forward that to anyone in their region. I think that would be our place.
Yeah.
But I don't know about us or initiating it or setting it, or, I mean, that would be setting a precedent that, I don't know if we wanna. I mean, if, if they've got something going, and they want the word out, I'd be glad to put the word out. And that's just my reading of what he's asking.
So, are you gonna give him a call?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a?
I've got the email address.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Just talking Thursday, didn't mention. I had my agency on AG meeting Thursday morning, and he's on that.
Nice. Do you mind if I look at this?
I think this is what was inserted, was just the.
Well, and actually, the first. Like this. Terror weapon discussed the need for a strategic plan for solid waste. Like, and long-term vision, like, like, really. That encompasses all of that, you know what I mean? Like, if we do all of that, you're doing these things.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are okay with that, I mean.
Yeah.
It, it's just.
All of.
Yeah, because all of that's part of this, that just summarizes, discusses the need for a strategic plan for solid waste and long-term vision, like, long-term planning, I guess not vision. Vision doesn't execute, but long-term planning would probably be better. Is that okay?
Yeah. Show that, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Table it for next one. Okay, awesome, thank you. Do you, while you guys are doing that, I'm gonna just, not West's here, yeah, you're fine, you're perfect. So, we have Wesley Lenter, Emergency Management IT Director with the 2023 Trend Micro Renewal.
So, Trend Micro for Business has all of our offices, and does our email for scanning of malware viruses. It's just the removal for the 4,977. This is actually a decrease of $1,000 from last year. So, the price.
That is.
We have our licenses by 20, which puts into a higher, higher discount. So, we'll have extra 20, 20 extra licenses, but it's actually $1,000 less than what we pay. So, I was like, yes, why wouldn't we have 20 extra licenses? With some, no, for 2023 years, obviously.
For motion to approve the purchase order presented from the IT Director to CDW Government in the amount of 4,957.25.
So.
Then move the second, and all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this three to zero. No, I just wanna make sure, on the budget, had you had a chance to look at breaking senior village out?
So, I'm in the process of doing that. That's a huge, huge undertaking, because we don't track our expense per ticket. And we don't track by department, so I have to go through every one item.
See, that's what I was wondering, that's good to know, because like, of the 1,400 tickets, like, do you know what the departments are?
So, I'm figuring that out now.
Okay.
And we're being by each other, but our software that we use was like prepaid software. And so, if I want to pay $3,000 a year, then it would do all that for me, but we don't. So, so I'm doing it manually, so it's taking a little longer.
I just, we're just really trying to get a, open an idea of what, what it is, so thank you.
If we move forward, you could track my department somewhere simply. So, if I want to pay $3,000 for the software that we use, yes, I could. But we don't, we have some free-based software, and so I have to manually do it.
When you get the tickets, could you file them in the folders and then look at the total at the bottom? Like, so I don't know, like, when I send in an IT ticket, then it says, your IT ticket has been received, or whatever.
So, and what we go, that is a brief description of what your ticket is, but it doesn't tell us who puts the ticket in.
Oh.
We have to log, we have to log into the software. So, it's just, just give us the notification that someone put a ticket in, this is what they want, so that we log into the software, and we see the ticket. So, yes, if it told us that you put a ticket in, and you were in this department, yes, we could file this into a folder on our email, but it doesn't, so.
But you log, but do you log in to see who it is afterwards? So, like, if I put one in now, and you're like, okay, I got it, and you log in, it's me, could you put it in the, like, in a commission folder to know? Like, is there a workaround?
We're doing a spreadsheet, but that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's easier just to export the spreadsheet of the data.
Oh.
So, sorry.
Got it.
So, I'm gonna try and show you the long emails, it's like. Cause it's not very.
Formative.
So, yeah, I'm just. So yeah, that's what it looks like.
But couldn't you just file that in, like, community corrections? Is that to the person?
So I could, but then. So I have a thousand emails that I save, which takes up more space on.
Yeah.
On our email server where I can just text.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry. So what we're doing is faster.
Yeah, just a thought around the three thousand dollar premium that we can. Yeah.
Used the system since two thousand fifteen, and we've never paid. So.
Thank you.
It's the same system that. That's the same system that may not use us for, for their.
Their ticket.
Great free-based software.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I have the letter of support for Rainbow Communications, so I'll just read it and then we can prove it, that works. So this letter is addressed to the Kansas Department of Commerce, to whom it may concern. We are writing in support of Rainbow Communications Everest, Kansas, a local fiber broadband internet provider, applying for grant funding through the Kansas Department of Commerce. If awarded, this grant will offer high-speed fiber internet services to my area. Rainbow Communications is a longstanding company that has provided high-speed internet to multiple homes and businesses within our county. Now they are looking to expand their networks even further to provide gigabyte fiber internet speeds to the more rural parts of northeast Kansas. The awarding of this grant to Rainbow Communications would ensure that people in our county would have opportunity to leverage the advanced fiber technology to help close the digital divide, provide education, job opportunities, improve rural healthcare, and enable future innovations that have not even been thought of yet. We support Rainbow Communications as a company who is committed to providing the absolute best in broadband technology and in customer service. We hope that you will approve the pro, this project for funding sincerely, and then the three of us.
Okay, maybe this isn't the most appropriate time, but I had had a observation or maybe complaint about Rainbow this last week, and again, it was from the two eighty-six road when they done that extension, and that it actually had reached out to them and that it actually came out and measured everything for him to get on, and they didn't put it in at, when they installed the line. So he's just concerned about our commitment to Rainbow and what could be done, so. I just, I just wanted to bring it out before, because I thought it would look hypocritical for me to be looking at this, discuss this complaint this last week.
Absolutely.
And then, and then turn around and vote for this without bringing it, I mean, it's probably not the way I would time it, but.
No, but also a couple of things to keep in mind is I would send that on so that Rainbow sees that, because I had feedback similar and sent, sitting on, and they want to know the good, the bad, and ugly, so they can address it on their end to make it things right. But as far as us partnering on this, in my opinion, this is just supporting to get funding for our county, not necessarily where.
Right.
Beyond that.
I, I realize that, but I, at the same time, I, I didn't think I could, could just.
Yep.
Willy-nilly vote for without bringing.
So I built that guy.
Yeah.
Yes, and I will.
Yeah. Do you have Jason, Jason's email too? Jason Smith?
No.
Okay.
You sent that to me.
Yep, I'll send them both to you, because Jason and Angie are who I sent the last one to, and they were on it, like, as far as addressing. Okay, so look for a motion to approve the letter of support for Rainbow Communications.
So move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pass this three to you, room. Now I'll reach this. I'm going to forward you an old email, Eric, and it has it on there. So we still have twenty minutes before Cory. Do you have any county counselor updates at all that you wanted to share today?
No, not really. Back sales stuff, but Roger and spent three hours yesterday going through the problem descriptions that we have legal descriptions that. I, I wouldn't say resolved. We haven't good enough that they, these are not problems that we created. These are problems that somebody who did a deed wrote a deed and recorded it twenty years ago and fifty years ago. He's questionable, legal descriptions that we're trying to make sure that we have clarity in the petition we're filing, but I think we got through those. File.
Okay. Okay, getting back to you on your joint communications resolution. You had made the couple changes in the wording you had mentioned, and we were waiting until last week. So can we put that on to adopt next week?
Well, we, you had also asked me to send out the, kind of said a very rough draft of a broader resolution, and I don't know if you want those. If we want to have that discussion. The resolution that I had sent was, was pretty specific and only dealt with the change. Hierarchy. Structure, yes.
And that was the one from May twenty-second? That's the, that's the one, the only one that I have. And it's pretty short. It's just one page. Resolution placing the Atchison County Joint Communications Director, supervision of Atchison County Sheriff. All the. With Michelle's attest. I just wanted to bring it up, because we, we, we haven't done it. And it's still in my blue folder, so I just wanted to. Following up on that. Yep, you bet. And then also, the other thing that I wanted to touch base on with you guys was Jody had sent us an email about the contract with Amberwell, and just wondering if what we need to do to give her authority to move forward with that.
We, we've talked about it, and we've reached back out to Amberwell with some suggested improvements.
Okay, perfect. So you guys have, because we got that email last Wednesday, so you guys have been working on it since. And she'll come, she'll come to us with a final. Okay, perfect. All right, I'm going to file that one away then.
Sorry, this is going to be done when?
Um, I just brought it up, because.
Okay.
He brought it to us two weeks ago, and then we were waiting till last week, and then I just want to make sure, like, where you guys, where we're all at on it, so we can get it.
What were the changes that we talked about, that resolution on the sheriff taking over?
Well, the, the changes from the original draft that I emailed was that changed sheriff's office, sheriff's department to sheriff's office with this minor change, and added Atchison County Rescue to the list of the agencies they were certified.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So this is the updated one then?
Okay. Yeah, but those changes, I'm okay with it. Many of the hospitals involved too, that kind of goes without saying as far as.
Well, I don't think we do dispatching for them.
There's a dispatcher, they're on the radio, and so, yeah, that's, that, that won't matter, I guess.
You know, you're right, they are.
Yeah. They are. I had heard some feedback about the change, and one of them was that there was no public discussion about the move. It was just, I mean, the old transparency monsters reared its ugly head again, because we had no, it was never an agenda item. We never discussed it in public. It would just had two executive sessions, boom, it was, went directly to a vote, and so there was zero input from anyone else.
Yeah. This is, because basically it's a personnel issue that turned into a change in their direction, so it's kind of an awkward thing to have a whole lot of public discussion, so it's, it is an awkward one.
Or even, or even a heads up to any of the other consumers of the dispatch.
One for me, when it comes to safety and some of the concerns that were given, I, time is of essence, in, in my opinion of.
You know, emergency medical services, that may cover that really, this is. Because they're intimately involved with emergency medical side, so I think, okay, that was the only thing I thought of that was, I suppose it really is.
Do I need a, a different copy, because this one has X's locked out?
We would, and then. So fifteen twenty-six. And then it says May down below, so.
Yeah.
If you want me, I might curtsy Cory's available, and he could pop in, and then we could go into a workshop until noon. If you guys are good with that, then that would alleviate the workshop afterwards, because we're running good on time. Is that okay?
You want Lindsay to join us for that one, is this for?
No, not seen as yet.
Okay.
Just with the financial director for.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to grab and see if Cory can.
No, I'm just.
You ready to go, Brad?
Sure. Yeah.
I'm prepared for first.
Okay, thanks for joining us early, Cory. I have Cory Scott, Emergency Medical Services Director for Billing Software Purchase Order Approval.
I apologize for not getting this on there sooner as far as the attack moves, but this really should make a deal. It's the same billing software we've been using for some time. The price just went up, so I need to re-improve the purchase order, because it is over my spending authority. So went up five hundred and sixteen dollars or worse, what we've been paying for it. It hasn't gone up in price since twenty nineteen, so happy about price increases. I don't think it's unexpected or a surprise.
I have a quick question for you. So, and can you explain to me, because I know our Joint Communications Director has been working with the sheriff on RMS system, and this company is the same, is it, is this different, just the same company?
Yeah, I don't know what they use on that, so that, that would be coincidental if it's the same company.
I just wonder if it's worth asking the question before. So this is just for your billing?
Correct. I think Central Square, yeah, we only utilize this for our billing process.
Okay.
Central Square, I sure owns a number of different.
Okay.
Softwares.
Perfect.
Systems.
Okay.
So what the billing software is actually named is TriTech. That's why it's on there with the two different things. So, yeah, we're using a Central Square product that's similar to the sheriff's department, it's purely.
Okay, perfect. I just, no, you're fine. It's just the Central Square. I was like, oh, let me just ask this question.
They own a lot of softwares.
Okay, perfect. And so I've looked for a motion to approve the Atchison County Purchase Order for EMS to Central Square, the tri-tech.com for the annual billing software subscription via five thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So move. Say.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this three to zero. Cory, I'll just stick this in the blue folder to be scanned in.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to get a copy of that.
I will. I'll make sure you get it. Was that? All right. I would look for a motion to approve Atchison County Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash fifteen twenty-six. A resolution placing the Atchison County Joint Communications Director under the supervision of the Atchison County Sheriff of a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second? Second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Oh, my goodness, my handwriting just went down tubes from that one. Okay, so I would like to have a motion to adjourn into a workshop until noon for, when we come back at open session with Joe Snyder. Motion to recess into workshop.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So.
It's my first recess. Okay, it's been moved to a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you. Okay, it is twelve o'clock, and we are back in open session. Do you want to look at the revised minutes that?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, so the revised minutes from May fifteenth, the wording has been updated to.
Under new business, business before the board. The first, or the one sentence should say, Chairwoman Quinn discussed the need for a strategic plan for solid waste and long-term planning, and then the rest of that paragraph, the bullet points would be stirkers.
I'm going to approve the corrected minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Thank you for taking care of that. All right, Joe Snyder, Ridenbridge Superintendent, Government Solutions Team.
Everyone, this is Drew Craven.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
You're good. Do we have a presentation slide that go through, or one has been over?
Just right clicker for it.
It might be because it's on my screen.
Oh. There way.
It's gonna be my mouse. Okay, it's gonna be my mouse on the screen.
Okay. If you go back to the first one, I'll just. There we go. Very personal, yes. All right. Well, I'll get started. I'll introduce myself. My name is Drew. I work for Government Solutions Team. So you might be thinking of who we are, what we do. So we are an educator to municipalities and to manufacturers on cooperative person. Kind of like what cooperative person is, how does it work, how does it keep you compliant? You'll hear us start talking about other cooperative agencies out there that might be sourced well. Those are the big cooperatives, even NASCO are the agencies used out there. We're not affiliated with them in a sort of way. We just educate municipalities on these cooperatives. And so what we want to show you today is these contracts, they're a way for you guys to control your purchase. How only can you control the purchase? You can buy the equipment you want at a price that is most likely best in the industry. And it keeps you compliant. So if you want to switch to the next one. So this is some data right here. So Dell Tech, they do market research on specifically procurement and how government agencies are spending and how they're saving the dollars. So this was done in two thousand eighteen. What they wanted to figure out was how are government agencies spending their dollars? Because the common misconception is everything that a government agency purchases, they have to do an RFP for. And that actually wasn't the case. What they found out, less than half of government agencies' purchases would have done the traditional bid process. Nineteen percent they did state contracts, twenty percent cooperative purchasing, like what we're talking about today, and then twenty one percent they sole source the item. It is trending more and more in the direction of using these contracts to purchase with. Now, why do I say that? It worked over there, but now.
No, it just.
Oh, there we.
I'll say it's there now. I'll have to go back one more.
There we go.
There's there's the list.
This. This is the amount of dollars. This is in billions of dollars that are going through these contracts in the whole United States. So back in two thousand fifteen, twenty nine million dollars went through these contracts. It's expected to be sixty one billion dollars. And why is that? Well, because agencies are starting to figure out, well, this is a way that we can buy what we want and keeps us compliant. And some other agencies, they they might think that they only can buy office supplies and, you know, coffee years and just kind of smaller stuff on these contracts. But you actually can buy all the way up to heavy equipment by motorators or tractors, you you name it. Almost anything you can think of that you guys already purchased, you can purchase with these contracts. Some other things that Dell Tech wanted to figure out was what are the top four issues that you guys are facing as a government agency? So we have budget and funding issues, cumbersome bureaucratic process, workload staffing limitations, and then getting participation from vendors. So how can a cooperative purchasing agency help you guys in all of these areas right here? So for the budget and funding issues, it actually can help you in a few different areas. Number one, it takes a lot of time to go through a bid process. You know, we've heard anywhere from two hundred fifty hours, somewhere around there of the total man hours it'll take from from beginning to end on a bid process. And at times, you know, it it takes a lot of money for you guys as an agency to go through that process. You know, we've heard some agencies on more simplistic RFPs, it costs them eleven thousand dollars. More complex RFPs will cost them thirty thousand dollars. Now, that might not be you guys. It might be that that's really high. But what we're trying to really show you guys, it is expensive because it takes you time, it takes you money. So these contracts, they satisfy your bidding requirements. They have actually done the bidding for it. We'll dive into that a little bit later. This is the way that you guys, it keeps you compliant and you're you're creating efficiency as well, saving money. Another way is a lot of these companies, they are they're responding in a way that you're going to get the best pricing. So let's say for a John Deere Caterpillar, you go down the list of different manufacturers out there. When you purchase that product through these contracts, you're going to get most likely the best pricing for that product. And then a third way that they can help you in the budget and funding issues, you actually can do a lease through these contracts. And so that won't come out of your capital expenses like purchased with, rather actually come out of your operating budget. And so that's another way, you know, if you guys can't afford it, but you can need a piece of equipment, you can do that, you know, still keep you compliant when using these contracts. cumbersome bureaucratic process. We all know that the bid process can be cumbersome. It can be bureaucratic. So something that satisfies that process, it creates an efficiency there and it'll alleviate that cumbersome bureaucratic process. Workload staffing limitations. So that's something to talk into agencies. Everybody's facing workload staffing limitations. Not only is it hard to fill the positions that you need filled now, but then you have people retiring on top of that. And that's creating more and more hours for the people within your agency. So using a contract, how can that help you there? Well, again, it's creating efficiencies. It takes a lot of time and hours to do an RFP for you guys as an agency. So if you had something you can use that satisfies that you buy through, it's going to create efficiencies in everybody's job in the staffing limitations world. Getting participation from vendors. So it says right here, fifty four percent of government agencies reported having difficulty attracting interest from vendors on their bids or solicitations. And that's something that we've actually seen a lot of in our times, you know, especially in the premium manufacturers, you know. If you guys do an RFP, oftentimes low dollars is what shows. And because of that, the premium manufacturers, they're not the cheap ones out there. And so we've heard that they grow frustrated and it's harder for you guys as an agency to get them to respond to your bids and solicitations. So if you have a contract that you can use, you're going to get more participation from premium vendors. And at the end of the day, you guys want premium, but you don't want junk out there. You don't want these stuff to just achieve guys. We want to be able to have quality equipment that's going to service your agency well. And so this is a way by using contracts. A story is actually out of Kansas, the county Kansas on the northwestern side of Kansas. We had a highway superintendent. He called us looking for more information on cooperative purchasing. He knew he wanted to use a contract. The reason why is it was the end of year. So around Christmas time, get a budget to spend. And you know, he needed a motor motorator and he knew if he did the bid process itself, he would have enough time within a week and a half, get eleven years. So he called us, asked about contracts, how they work, how they can keep them compliant. As he said, his board probably would approve the contracts. And so we educated him how it keeps them compliant, how it's a way that they can purchase and, you know, it's safe within all their state local statutes as as compliance. And he presented to his board, showed them all the documentation, so that's the way that they buy premium equipment. And they saw it all. They said, you're exactly right. So they gave him the green light, said you can buy this motorator. He had it within his shop within a week. And so this is the power of using these contracts. You can get the pieces of equipment that you want and the timeframe that you guys want. And there's an efficiency there too. You know, you're not spending all these man out trying to go through this RFP process. It's already done. So cooperative purchasing, what we really like to show you is it's a purchasing tool. It's a tool for you guys to use. It saves you time. It saves you resources. It exercises the joint powers law. So joint powers law, this is why it works. Without the joint powers law, cooperative purchasing would not be a blackweight purchase. But because of the joint powers law, this is how it works. So that's what it exercises. That's the same thing as state contracts, which is exactly that. They all exercise joint powers. It provides control. It provides a way for you guys to purchase instead of you want. Oftentimes, if you're going to bid process before we go to the next slide, you're not always guaranteed to get the piece of equipment that you guys need. Kind of just left whatever's cheapest. And so this provides control and you can get exactly what you guys want at a price that you guys want. So the traditional bid process, you guys have been through this probably many, many times. I want to show you how the traditional bid process looks and then how a contract looks in contrast to it. So you start by identifying the need. So let's say you guys have some trucks that need to be loaded, but the wheel loader that you have have a lot of hours on it. It needs to be replaced. You identify the need, we need a wheel loader. You start meeting with all the local dealerships around you to see what do you guys have? What's going to best suit our agency? And then once you found the wheel loader, you spec out the equipment. So, you know, specking out the equipment is when you, you know, if you're asking for the specs because you want that piece of equipment, you want the best chance of getting that piece of equipment. Yeah, there you go. That's that works. And you write the RFP. So what we like to say is at this point in the the bid process, you're at control of your purchase. You found what you want and you're writing the RFP to get what you want. Then you advertise the RFP and ask some other manufacturers to hear about it. They respond to the RFP. There's the bid opening. Then there's the bit of valuation. And at this point, because low dollars simply awarded, this is when you've lost control of your purchase. What I mean by that, you might want something that didn't come in at low dollar. So this makes it tough for you guys to build a standardize your fleet. Because at the end of the day, that's what we want to do. We want to be able to standardize our fleet. We don't want ten different brand tractors, ten different brand motorators. We're running to all these different dealerships for parts, for service. Standardizing our fleet to the brands that we want to work with. We have one dealership we're working with, one parts and service. You know, we can stock parts and service that are interchangeable. This is the way that's going to be best to operate. And when we purchase on low dollar, it makes it hard for us to do that. Then there's a protest period. So by law, if the manufacturer feels like that they're specked out, they could file a formal protest. And what that is actually start this whole process over is again costing you guys more time and more money to go through this. After all that, you can finally get your PO issued, receive your equipment and make your payment. So using a contract, how does that work in comparison to this? So it brings it all the way back down to the end, identify the need. Find the wheel loader that you want. You start meeting with the vendors. And instead of specking it out, because the problem with specking it out is you might not get the piece of equipment tailored the way you need. You know, you might say this piece of equipment that I want has a certain choice pick that the competition doesn't have that. You know, I I want to tailor that RFP to get that, but I don't necessarily need that choice pick. It's not really work well with what we're doing. With a contract, you configure the piece of equipment to however you want, however it's going to best suit your agency. You make it to where it's going to suit your agency. And then instead of going through the bid process, use a contract where you literally can get a quote, issue your PO and receive your equipment, all while satisfying this at the bottom. You're not premium moving, you're needing to go to bid. You're actually satisfied, you're needing to go to bid. I'm kind of walking through a little bit how it works. So you have a cooperative purchasing agency, Sourcewell, Omni, NASCO. So with Sourcewell, for example, they are their own government agency out of the state of Minnesota. Omni, they use the city of Tucson, city of Tucson, the RFP for the contract. So you have the contract and they'll go through every single one of these steps on the bottom, US agents. So they write the RFP, let's say for the heavy construction, they're looking to get a heavy construction contract together. They'll write the RFP. The manufacturers all across the nation will hear about this and they'll respond to it. So it is competitive bid. So they they evaluate it. And at the end, they award the manufacturers based on a point system. And we'll show you that at the end as well. They'll award these manufacturers based on value. And once they they've awarded a contract to a manufacturer, you as an agency can actually leverage that contract, kick you back off that contract. And that is satisfying this whole process right here. You know, that's kind of a big part of how it works. They're doing the same thing that you guys do because they're doing it at a national level. And you would kick back all that contract, just like you could kick back. That one, that's a lot of moving parts, but just kind of one page, just, you know, visualize it. Left side, this is the traditional bid process. This takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of money for you as an agency. Using the cooperative purchasing route though, it's if they have a piece of equipment or whatever you need in stock, you can get it in a timeframe that you guys need it at a price that you guys need it. And it's all one satisfying entire bid process. You know, we hear from time to time, yeah, that sounds great, but but we have to bid, you know, a big thing that we're really pushing is the bidding's already been done for you because these agencies have done the bid process for you. It keeps you compliant. And so you can go on the Sourcewell website and they actually have all the contract documents on there. The entire RFP for the heavy construction or flooring or office supplies, you name it. You can go and search that. It's all public information. You can click on the contract documents and you can actually go through and create every single thing from you know, the responses from the manufacturers, the manufacturers that rewarded contracts that you can utilize. You can print them off, keep them in file if you want, just to kind of have and say you're not required to, but you can if you'd like to. And I encourage you just to call there and put in all the documentation they have. A common assumption that we hear from other agencies is we're required to bid, we must get through bids, we have to advertise two weeks in our local paper, file a little bit. Something that we really try and to share with you guys is this part right here is the we. You know, your laws say that your purchase has to go through a competitive bid process. We understand that. But because these agencies, because they've gone through that process for you, it's satisfying your requirement. It says that purchase has to go through a competitive bid process, but it doesn't say that you as an agency have to be the one that does that. Another thing that we want to point out too is public records, they allow for exceptions to the bidding process. So what I mean by that, emergency purchases. You know, if you guys have a tornado or a flood that comes through here, you don't have time to go through a bidding process. You don't have time to go get through bids, advertise two weeks. You need it now. And so your public record is that they allow exceptions to go get what you need when it emergency rises. You buy sole source equipment, used equipment, that all works the same way. You don't have to go and get three bids on those. But same when you're using joint power authority. So if you ever bought their state contract or if you ever did feedback, you know, you won't have to actually go and get through this because you're using joint power laws. Same when you're using a cooperative purchasing contract like a Sourcewell and Omni, you're exercising joint power laws. So it's what's keeping it legal, what's keeping it compliant for you guys to use. A big thing that we like to show is requirements to bid and permission to use cooperative purchasing contracts, they'll exist at the same time. So you'll see over here that you have video requirements, but you also see in your state law that you can use contracts and other means to satisfy those bidding requirements. Another thing we hear is, you know, we owe it to our taxpayers to file a little bit. Something we like to share is, you know, let's say when you're buying your car. You know, price is something that you you could consider when you're buying your car, but you're also considering the dependability, the fuel efficiency, resale value, the reputation. Experiencing pattern deal. These are all things that go through your mind when you're buying a car. Yes, price is, you know, it's significant only to purchase something. But you don't want to buy cars to break down all the time. You don't want to buy a car, it's maybe gas, those are, you have a dealership that's not, they don't have a service department to help service you. So we need to be thinking, you know, the equipment or whatever we buy, that we're going through these steps as well as an agency to say, okay, is this really the cheaper option? Is it really going to save us money for longer? So, you know, one of the primary responsibilities of an agency is to steward taxpayer dollars and we're aware of that. But what we see is the cost and price is different. So what I mean by that? The initial purchase price of a piece of equipment and the overall cost, they're they're two different numbers. The initial purchase price takes only about fifteen to twenty percent of the overall lifecycle cost that you're spending as an agency. And so if you're buying just on price alone, even cheaper price, what's it costing you when you add up everything that that piece of equipment, you know, costs? You got things of fuel consumption, you know, is a cheap piece of equipment going to last as long? If they're going to break down more often, then you're having to go get parts done, or if you can't get the machine serviced, then that's downtime on projects. Is it as efficient when it does the projects for you? And at the end of the whole lifecycle cost, how much can you pre-sell it for? So when you're buying more premium equipment, it's going to actually save you by in the long run. Because yes, you're having more since the purchase price, but it's going to be more fuel efficient, it's going to be more reliable for you guys. It's going to last longer. You're going to have a dealership, most times with premium manufacturers, you're going to have a dealership that can service them and service them very fast, very well. They have the parts. And they're going to be very customer oriented. So all that to say is it's going to last longer and then you go sell it, you can sell it for more money. So these are all things to be thinking about when you're buying equipment that oftentimes the cheapest, not always the best for the agency. Another story that we like to tell is, this was another road superintendent. He, on the coldest day of the year, he was at the furthest spot from his shop. He actually had a piece of equipment fail on it. And that piece of equipment was a fairly new piece of equipment. He just bought it recently. If it had a hydraulic failure and it's still under warranty. So he called up his dealership like he should, say, hey, can you come help? We got this engine failure, hydraulic failure. And the dealership was not much help. They're like, we'll get to you when we get to here. The days could be weeks, but was not much help towards this road superintendent. And so this road superintendent was frustrated that he just spent a lot of money on this piece of equipment. It's already breaking down and they're not. It's already breaking down, and they're not here to help. And so he called us to kind of understand how contracts work because he knew if he went through the bid process, he might get stuck with that same brand piece of equipment that he didn't want. He wanted a quality piece of equipment that could help him and his agency be more efficient, not break down, and have a service department that was gonna be there to help him. So kind of to wrap this all up in a bow, cooperative purchasing. It allows you to take control of your mind, buy what you want. The ability to standardize your fleet, get all the pieces of equipment from the same manufacturer. You're not getting all these different brands running around to all these different dealerships. It is oftentimes the best stewardship of the taxpayer dollars buying these contracts because you're getting the best prices, you're saving money, not having to give the big process on your own because it's been done for you, it satisfies that, and allows you to manage your fleet. Something that, we have some resources I want to hand out to each and every one of you guys. So the first thing that we have is the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Reference Guide. So what that is, it's gonna high level everything that Sourcewell does to keep you compliant, kind of give you a better understanding of how it works. Another thing we want to give you is your local state statute. And where it says exactly in your state statute, it has the code number, where you can use cooperative purchasing, using the joint powers laws to be compliant. So we printed that off to give you guys, review it, look over it. Another thing on that, before we go to this, these cooperatives you can use in all fifty states. And so it is compliant in every single state to be used. State statutes are worded different per state and how they kind of authorize them, but they do offer provisions for these contracts. Another thing, when you buy using these contracts, you're buying from your local dealers. So these contracts aren't just the way you purchase, but money's being actually funneled into your local dealer and back into your local contract. So it actually is a way for you to store your local. This right here, this is a membership list and sales report. We're gonna give you this as well. I just pulled a few different areas around you guys. But this is your guys' county, your Sourceful member number, the city of Ashland, Sourceful member number, all the way down in areas around you. And then what you're buying on Sourcewell. So this was the last from 2019 to now on contracts utilized. And so we're seeing that Ashland County, Spott John Deere, Use West Bay, city of Ashland buys Staples and Field Turb. All the way down to city of Lawrence, they're really utilizing this tool and buying a lot of things. And you guys can, too. Pretty much, if you can think it, you can buy it using Sourcewell. And so, like I said, we only hold a handful of agencies around you, but this is something that hundreds of agencies around are utilizing these contracts to be able to control your purchase and save money. And then lastly, this is the bid tab. So, you know, if you think, okay, it has to be competitive bid, well, Sourcewell, when they do an RFP, this is the heavy construction RFP, you know, these are, these are all the corporate manufacturers that responded to that. So it is competitive bid. And then they go through and they do an evaluation system on how they're actually gonna work the contract. So if you look a little closer, this is a value-based solicitation. And so pricing is worth four hundred points, all the way, you know, total points is one thousand points. And what they mean by pricing, it's not cheapest price, it's actually best value for the dollar price. So they'll go through with pricing, warranty coverage, they'll add points for each thing. And then they'll award the points, three eighty-two for nine twelve, and they'll give a rank on each manufacturer where they feel like, for the money spent, this is the value you're given, and this is the best, and this is the worst. And they'll probably cut a line to where they see like, okay, this is where it comes off. Maybe like anything below eight thirty-two, we won't order a contract to it. So they kind of will evaluate it per situation, but not everybody who responds. So this is all, again, public information on Sourcewell's website. And that's it. This is our contact information. If you ever guys run into questions or anything like that, call us and we have to help you. Is there any questions that you guys have about cooperative purchasing, how it works, how it keeps you compliant?
So Sourcewell versus Government Solutions Team. So Sourcewell's the program, and you're just the,
We're the educator.
An educator.
Yeah, so we have nothing, Sourcewell is the government agency that does the RFP.
Okay.
Same with Omni and NASBO. Those are actually contract holders. We're just a team that tells people, we educate, offer support. Like I said, we're not affiliated with them in any way. We go around teaching agencies, we go around teaching manufacturers that this is a power that you guys can utilize. And a lot of times, it's not being utilized within the agency level, just because there's a lack of knowing more about it. So they don't want to get into trouble, which we understand that.
Yeah.
And so we're just showing a little bit, this is to keep you compliant, and it's a way that you guys can buy what you want. As at the end of the day, you guys want to know if you buy what you want, if you're pricing what you want.
Some of the state bids, there'll be stuff on there we don't need.
Yeah.
I mean, there'll actually be stuff on there we don't need. And then there're also a piece of equipment may not be as high quality a piece as what we're looking for. So just going with the state bid doesn't always fit your needs. And Drew was at the Mink Conference last year in San Joe. I just went to the Caterpillar Conference in Little Rock, and they were down there. So they were trying to speak to everybody. And I just felt like if I could get them to come up and talk to you guys, they could explain a lot better than I can. And there's a lot more to it than just our equipment. There's other things.
Exactly, like I said, flooring, roofing. And each contract is different. Like you said, state contracts are different than Sourcewell's, Sourcewell's different than Omni. The reason why we bring up a few, there's dozens of contracts, there's regional contracts. So just do your research on what contract works best for you. Something that we've seen is that the Sourcewell office gets free for you guys to use, free to sign up. And oftentimes, the Sourcewell office agencies signed up, you know, they're buying, printing supplies, they don't even know it. That is something that's being utilized in other areas. Each are, they're free services for you to use, but if they don't have something on it that you need, there's a specific brand that you need, and they don't have it, look at other contracts because they will also keep you compliant. It's a way for you to create an efficiency within your agency.
So like, I've been trying to do the Kenworth trucks, use that. Move off to do them through Sourcewell. You know, I like the cat equipment, so it's already priced out to go through cat. Shouldn't we say that out loud, but it's the truth. You know, it's just like our pickups are all one brand.
The thing is, just to, I'd like to talk about this when we talk about the tariff policy updates.
Yeah, and if there's anything that you guys, you know, see that I have this little area here where I don't understand, this is our information. Reach out to us and we can even help you in that area. But like I said, oftentimes, if you want a certain piece of equipment, you're gonna get the best price on that. If you go through the bid process, yeah, you might be able to get the same price for that same piece of equipment, but you've just spent hours and money in your agency to go through that process to where it's really unnecessary. That's at the end of time, that's what you wanted the whole time. Any other questions?
Do the agencies you've worked with, do they use the same, like Sourcewell, all the time? Or do they use different ones?
Yes, it's a little bit of both. Sometimes they buy, you know, with Sourcewell, they got everything they need, so that's one they use. Sometimes they'll run into things that they don't have, and they'll use another contract. That's why I said, just educating on different contracts. But most of the time, it's just easier. They're signed up, they'll find one they like, and they'll stick with that one.
Okay.
But it's Omni Partners.
I didn't know they varied a little bit as far as their expertise or certain, certain kinds of equipment, or if they would be a little different.
No, typically, it's just more, if it has what they need, they're gonna stick with that contract. It's just they know it, they're familiar with it. Another thing is dealers, so like Caterpillar dealer, John Deere, whatever you're talking about, they're pretty familiar with the bigger contracts. They're more familiar with the Sourcewells, the Omias, the NASBos. And so NASBO's more of a state-level contract. They're familiar with your state contract using that. They're gonna be less familiar with the smaller contracts, but they still work. They still work just the same.
Thank you.
Well, I'll hand out all those flyers. You guys look over, read it, and if you guys have anything else, let me know.
Yeah, thank you. Next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Two, and we'll go in next second.
I'll leave one more extra if someone that wants to know a little more about it. But if you guys need us, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go in Eric's bag. We got a list. These jeopardy music balls. That'll be your goodness. Well, thank you for sitting up, lifting the thing up. Hope it was okay what I said. I was trying to hurry things up together.
Why?
I stole that, Rick Burger, he responded with email. Media and company, and so I took part of that and had a little bit. We did just use it, so what I'm still.
Yeah, I've had very work, employees reach out.
I said that to some people on their emails. I tried to catch people from other organizations.
I shared it on our chat.
Okay.
How did you guys pick the date for the statute? Originally, he's gonna try it on Tuesday.
That is Tuesday.
Yep, team, they knew.
They used to have the, you can have the seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one feet.
Yeah.
The computers, they sent it back to his father's day. Yeah, so Casey, this thing's hard.
Okay, because I was anticipating it's gonna happen a week later.
That's right, yes, where I was outside there. I was like, oh. And so we started asking around, and I said, well, we can't get that. It's between July and, and we did, we did. Okay, here we go.
Hold on.
We're in now.
Well, that's when I seen.
Kansas City, and they were showing.
They already done your kickoff.
Yeah. I sent emails.
Okay, attorney-client, thirty minutes, finance directors, road and bridge superintendent, and us, and. Yeah, he was just asking. They're using our.
I'm gonna get ready to get a boat out, spend a couple of minutes.
What is this guy? My husband's looking at pictures of this guy.
I've seen that.
I don't know what that guy is. I don't know. I'm sure my kids will know when I show it.
Groot was the tree, wasn't it?
Kind of looks like it, but.
But this is orange. It's an orange tree.
Do you know where your husband is? Seriously, where is your husband?
He's living the best life.
I'll move at the Board of County Commissioners, recess into executive session twelve thirty-six PM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion and that the board come out of the executive session at one oh seven. PM at the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, Mark Zeltner, Joe Snyder, and Pat Henderson.
Okay, we moved and seconded all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session. We're gonna go into, when Alan gets back from the restroom, take the session on elected personnel, twenty minutes, commission, finance director. We just have a couple of sessions, and that's it.
The Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at one oh nine PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session at one twenty-nine PM in the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, HR director, and finance director.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Okay.
Yeah, I think that would give us time to think about everything.
All right, so we have another non-elected personnel. Thirty minutes, commission, finance, and HR director. Yes.
I move at the Board of County Commissioners recessing to executive session at one thirty-nine PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session at one fifty PM in the EOC one zero four four three US Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, finance director, and HR.
And seconded, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, passes.
Did I say thirty?
You said one, but you said come out, though, at one fifty.
Oh.
So you took it, no, nine minutes off for the coming back.
Thirty, forty, fifty.
Okay, we are back in public session. Do we have any public comments? Being none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Sorry. Okay, then move the second and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. We are adjourned at one fifty-nine PM.